We're on the air, councilors. You made it just in the nick of time. So, welcome to the Finance Committee meeting of May 23, 2017. We're here to talk about the 2018 budget and review with the department heads. This is posted as a Finance Committee meeting, but many of the other councilors are here as well. So, I'm going to have Pam take the roll call of Finance, and then we'll introduce the other councilors.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor LaBarge?
Present.
Councilor Nash is not with us yet.
En route.
He is en route. He is en route. I'd like to point out, we also have Counselor LaBarge here, and Counselor O'Donnell here, and Counselor Bidwell here, and Counselor Scara here, and Counselor Klein here, and expecting Counselor Nash as well when he gets here from I-90 where he's stuck in traffic. So, this evening, as I mentioned, this is the FY '18 budget review with different department heads. It's a special meeting of the Finance Committee with the council invited as well. Tonight's meeting will be broadcast live on NCTV. Viewers may send emails to this address, citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. That's citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov, to ask questions or share thoughts with regards to the budget proposals we're doing this evening. All entries, online entries, need to include the writer's name and address, and comments or questions will be read to the presenters during the meeting. The other thing you need to understand is if you email the city council something, it becomes a matter of public record. So, if you send it to us, it's not secret. You know, this is not Mass Live. This is going to be public record if you've sent us a question. We do need your name. Please remember, as you're watching the meeting, that the council is empowered to cut budget line items, but we can't increase any of these expenditures. Following this public hearing, the budget will come up twice during our meetings. In June, the city council needs to vote twice on the budget to approve it before the end of June, the new fiscal year begins on July 1. So, please remember, if you ask a question here, it'll be televised and live, and if you send us an email question, it will become public record as well. All right? We are going to, we don't have public comment at the beginning of the meeting like we usually do, but we'll let the public in the room and the public at home ask questions when each department head finishes their presentation. So, what we'll do is we'll let them do their presentation. The members of the city council will ask them some questions, and then we'll take questions from the people who are in the room, and anyone at home that communicates with Counselor Dwight. Counselor Dwight is going to handle the online questions, and I'll take the questions from the floor in the room.
And it's appropriate, we should announce that, once again, the phone number, you know, to text me, and the same rules apply, that you identify yourself by name and address, and the phone number is 413-262. I forgot my phone number. I don't want, I want to make doubly sure, because if you start texting the wrong people, it's just going to look bad.
There's no pizza orders, please.
No.
It's on the screen.
Is it posting on the screen? Never mind. The number on the screen.
Is that really up there? Because we can see, we can see a lower third, but we can't actually read it from where we are.
That's what she said.
Does that look like the correct information up there?
Yeah.
Yep.
Pay no attention to the woman behind the curtain.
413.
It is, it is correct.
200.
All right. So, everybody at home knows more about this than we do.
We'll find out.
Absolutely. So, our first department that we're going to hear from is the Department of Public Works. And Donna Liscali is here. She is the Director of the Department of Public Works. And please go ahead with your presentation, and then we'll ask you to entertain some questions.
Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. So, the Department of Public Works budget is divided into several sections. We have the general fund divisions, as well as the enterprise funds, which control utility operations. So, I'll kind of just run through each in summary, and then kind of talk specifics. So, the general fund divisions are responsible for maintaining and improving our roadways, paved and unpaved, sidewalks, recreational fields, bicycle paths, bridges, of which there are 33 in Northampton, cemeteries, Musante Beach, and more than 150 vehicles and pieces of specialized equipment through our mechanics. Most repairs are actually done in-house. We also provide response, obviously, to snow and ice events and other bad weather events. We maintain road safety signage, traffic signals, pedestrian and pavement markings, and also participate in mosquito control. So, that's kind of a, just an overview of general fund operations. And then we have the enterprise funds, of which there are four: water, sewer, stormwater, flood control, and solid waste divisions. So, we have thousands and thousands and thousands of assets that we maintain through these enterprise funds. We have hundreds of miles of water pipes and sewer lines, stormwater drains, more than 5,000 catch basins, 5,000 sewer and drain manhole structures, 400 outfalls. Some of these numbers might sound familiar from the stormwater presentation that I did several months ago. Just to give you an idea of the scope, we have 110 miles of sanitary sewer, 120 miles of stormwater drain, 160 miles of water mains. So, our buried infrastructure that you can't see is quite impressive. Additionally, we have more than 3,000 acres of watershed land that we manage and maintain to protect our public water drinking supply. We have six reservoirs and dams. Three of them are active. We also have a flood control pump station, levee systems, a water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, two transfer stations, a capped landfill, and a landfill gas-to-energy facility. So, that's just kind of an overview of all of the facilities that the DPW maintains in some way. So, you know, this is, this is my first year here, or the end of my first year here, so I can assure you, I can assure you that my team and I have done a very thorough analysis of operations and administrative functions, which is reflected in this budget, and certainly doesn't stop now, and will continue for obvious reasons. What I'd like to stress more than anything is that this budget reflects the increasing pressure that's on this department to comply with very, very strict licensing requirements for the personnel who work for us. The professional licensure that is required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is quite strict, and we also have incredibly strict operations requirements for our utility and general fund functions. So, just in terms of professional licensure, to talk about that for a second, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires a license for everything from operating a forklift to operating a wastewater treatment plant. And the training and continuing education and licensing requirements that goes into maintaining this infrastructure is huge. And just to give you a few examples, we're talking about operating a backhoe and a loader. You need to be licensed for that. Sanitary sewer collection, catch basin cleaning, bucket truck operation is part of having a hoisting license. The sidearm mower that mows the side of the road, that requires a license and continuing education. We're also governed by multiple regulatory authorities, including the Department of Environmental Protection. They oversee, you know, water, wastewater, landfill. Pretty much everything we do is commented on by them. Army Corps, EPA, and name a few. We have a Water Management Act permit and an MS4 permit, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with as it relates to stormwater. So, you know, as I put together the budget, we have to be really cognizant of, you know, just these incredibly strict requirements that this department operates within, and the fact that compliance is not voluntary. You know, it's something we have to do. And obviously, what I will say is, as far as the water side of this goes, you know, we're a public drinking water supplier, so incredibly tight controls on that. So, just in terms of highlights or things I kind of want to call your attention to, the utility operations are obviously, I mean, all the services we provide are critical, but what I want to particularly call your attention to is the utility operations. So, when you look at the Water Enterprise, you'll see that we're, we've added a couple of full-time employees to the Water Enterprise. So, again, this is, there is increasing pressure on the department to comply with these very strict DEP requirements. There are new testing requirements that are sort of being rolled out in a phased way, and we have needed to adjust to this. And the way we have adjusted to it is by creating the position of DEP Compliance Coordinator. The position is really responsible for keeping abreast of all of the regulations that are necessary to keep us in compliance with DEP, making sure that reports are filed in a timely manner and that we're in complete compliance. Additionally, we have a Chief Distribution Operator, who will also be working on some of these regulatory issues, but that's why you're seeing an increase in full-time employees in water. And additionally, in the Sewer Division, again, we have to, we have to maintain our infrastructure, and some of our infrastructure is, you know, aging more quickly than we would like. And, you know, it's very important for us to be very proactive in our maintenance, so you will see an increase in Sewer Division employees, because we need to be proactive. Just a sort of a really basic example of this is we have tree roots, you know, that grow into the sewer line, and we have sort of known trouble spots in the city, and if we can be proactive and get out there and, you know, with the jet rodder a couple of times a week and hit these known trouble spots, you know, we can prevent some very significant problems. So, that's just kind of a couple of highlights of the budget, but really a very thorough assessment of operations, which will certainly continue. And, you know, the things that we have asked for are what we believe to be absolutely necessary for the continued successful operation of the department. So, I'm happy to take questions.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Thank you very much for your presentation, and you mentioned how it's the end of your first year, and I certainly, I'm sure I speak for others when I say how grateful we are that you have spent this year with us, and how appreciative we are of all the work that you do, and all the work your staff does, day in, day out. I'm just curious, are there any staff additions in the Sewer, in the Sewer Division?
Yes, there are. So, we have staff who are allocated, so they're paid across multiple divisions. So, some of this represents us kind of tweaking operations and reallocating folks who already work for us, but in the Sewer Enterprise itself, we are proposing one new position, and that's for wastewater treatment plant maintenance technician. So, that is an additional new position, and the reasoning behind this is, obviously, our plant is aging. We are engaging in upgrades, but it's going to be a multi-year process, so that kind of mechanical maintenance piece to this is extremely critical, and that's why we've proposed the addition of that new position.
Okay. And are there any kind of management level changes you've made to an organizational chart or practices that you could highlight that are of interest, or not really?
Sure. So, in the Water Department, for example, the Chief Distribution Operator position that we've added, so we have a Chief Treatment Plant Operator, but our distribution system, as I mentioned, right, we have, you know, well over 100 miles of water mains, so we sort of need someone overseeing kind of the day-to-day operations of the distribution system. So, that's kind of a management position. We've also done some administrative reorganization, and looking at the financial operations of the DPW, and administration of contracts. So, we now have an administration manager at the DPW. It's a, it's kind of a redone position. We had an office manager, but we've kind of enhanced the responsibilities associated with this job.
Okay. I mention it because it's, I think it's important for the public to know that when staff are added, it's not simply because you want to add staff. You're actually finding efficiencies, and the department is probably, it sounds like you're finding new ways to run the Department of Works more efficiently for better outcomes for people.
That is correct.
So, thank you.
Counselor, go ahead, please.
I just said thank you, that's all.
Counselor LaBarge, you have a question.
Donna, on the Engineering Division, it says license and certification. Does the city pay for their license?
Yes, the city pays for license renewal fees for all professional licensure associated with the administration of your job function, whatever that might be. So, we have professional engineers who work for us, and the city reimburses those licensing charges.
Very fortunate. Also, if you look at DPW Administration Division, could you explain, you have the DPW Director, a Financial Administrator, an Administration Manager, Principal Account Clerk, and Principal Account Clerk. So, can you explain this, why do we have two clerks? Is it because of the amount of work?
Yes, we actually have more than two clerks. We have, the department actually has six clerks, and they are spread across multiple divisions. So, they perform job functions related to the general fund, you know, cemeteries and streets, and they also perform job functions that relate to solid waste, or water, or wastewater. So, these allocations that you're seeing here represent the amount of their time that we feel that they are spending on administrative activities related to, you know, cemeteries or streets, or trench permits, or that sort of thing.
Okay. I looked on, like, the Highway Division, looking at the staff. There's 18 staff in the Highway Division. You've got two vacancies there. When are those going to be filled?
Those jobs, we're actually interviewing for them now.
Okay. And also, let's see, on the Cemetery Division, you only have four staff, correct?
That is correct. We have proposed adding a position in the Cemetery Division this year, a laborer position, and that is because, obviously, we cover a lot of ground in the cemeteries, and operationally we felt that it was necessary.
I was just wondering, because I don't see any vacancies on here.
There's one vacancy in the Cemetery Division, in a laborer position.
But it wasn't there at press time when we gave the budget? It's not in there right now.
Right, it's not on here.
Oh, okay.
I think the business, we submit the budget on May 15, that gives me success.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, one will be added on?
Yes. Or, no, there'll be four total people.
Now, on Parks and Recreation, you have five staff and one vacancy.
Correct. So, you're seeing two foremen, and three equipment operators, as well as a vacancy. Correct.
How long has that person been off duty, that it's not filled yet?
And we're proposing this for this year.
Are you?
Yes.
Okay. And you have three vacancies on the Water Enterprise. You have 35 staff and three vacancies.
Yes, correct.
And when will those be filled? I mean, how long have they not been filled?
The, the timing of this is sort of tricky. You know, we go to press, and then, as the mayor mentioned, you know, we are, we're sort of filling positions as we're able to.
Doing it.
So, what I would say is that we are, we are actively interviewing for those positions which are open, and for those positions which have been proposed in the coming year, obviously, will start on July 1st.
I'm just curious, I've not seen so many vacancies like this. Now, I'm looking at the Water Treatment, and you have eight vacancies there.
So...
You have a WT, what is it, WTP operator, a WTP operator, a WTP operator, WTP maintenance technician, and a laborer. That's five of them.
Yes, so, the laborer is a new position that is being proposed for July 1st. The only two other positions that are vacant in the Water Treatment Plant right now are for the maintenance technician and one operator. Those are our two vacancies currently.
Now, let's go to the Sewer Enterprise. Could you explain to the public what ordinary maintenance is? What is ordinary maintenance?
Of the sewer system? So, that would be sort of what I described, is we have known trouble spots in the city, and we have a jet rodder, so it's a machine that clears...
That's what that is.
Clears the lines with kind of high pressure. You know, the maintenance activities that we undertake, we need to keep the sewage moving. So, our ordinary maintenance of the sewer system would be any activity that keeps the sewage moving throughout the collection system. So, it's kind of, you know, maintenance on pipes, maintenance on structures, you know, we want to make sure the manhole covers are flush and where they're supposed to be, that sort of thing.
Counselor LaBarge, would you, would you yield to another counselor from here? You've been asking questions for a while, and I know we have some...
I know, I would like to finish my questions.
We have a limited amount of time, Counselor LaBarge.
I've got a couple more minutes, and I'll be done.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wastewater treatment plant, we have three vacancies on that, and you're going to fill one. I know you did say that.
Yes, so currently, the maintenance technician position is proposed for July 1st, and the other two vacancies we are interviewing for right now.
And the solid waste, you did explain that position. And the stormwater flood control, we're pretty well set with that.
What I would say is that we have over 100 employees, so when you ask about vacancies, you know, it's definitely a legitimate question, and we move to try to fill vacancies as quickly as we can, but obviously, we have a posting process and an interview process, and, you know, that's something we have to work our way through. And people also can transfer within the department, too. So, you know, someone moves from one division to another division, and then you have to backfill their position. So, it's, you know, in smaller departments, this is not as challenging as it is in a large department.
I want to thank you, Donna, for everything you've been doing at the Department of Public Works and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Any other questions from here? Counselor Bidwell.
I, too, wanted to compliment you on a budget that would appear, based on what you say, meet all the rigorous compliance requirements that the department faces while maintaining the quality of services. Not that it's going to happen, but what's, what's on the wish list if you had the next $250,000? What are the things you'd like to be getting to that you just can't?
I think that, you know, I kind of like to say, we like to see improvement in all things. I feel like this budget is really tight, and I feel like it took, you know, it took me a full 12 months to really do an assessment of what we think needed to happen. I have a brand-new team. Money doesn't necessarily buy you improvement, you know. I think it needs to be a more thoughtful process than that. So, what we have asked for here, I think, is a really good start for the department, and I'll be able to answer your question better, you know, six months from now, but I feel like we're in a really good place right now, and, you know, in terms of putting a dollar value on it, it's not necessarily something that I can do right now.
Thank you. Other council questions? Because I know we have a question. Counselor Dwight has a question.
Next question. Actually, first, I'd like, in my capacity as a counselor, to ask you, with the preamble that before your time, this, this department lived under some pretty lean budgets, and you can actually see that reflected in the graphs as they moved from 2014 up to current and then projection. And so, consequently, we, there was a culture of deferred maintenance, that clearly you have to address all the things that we put off all those years because we just couldn't, we would cobble it together with spit and baling wire. And now, you, in your new capacity, have essentially, it seems at least, what's reflected in the budget and what's reflected in your presentations, is a culture of more proactive treatment and addressing issues before they become more expensive and onerous issues. Is that, am I, is my read close to correct?
Yes, you are correct. And some of the, you know, kind of the default is like, well, we're just going to throw more people at this, you know, I need more staff. That's not necessarily an accurate statement sometimes. I mean, you can say, okay, we need more people, but you also need to tighten up operations. So, what this budget is reflecting is, yes, we've, we've been sort of surgical about where we want to put people, but, you know, the behind-the-scenes stuff that no one necessarily knows about is how are we internally tightening up our operations, and that's how you address some of this deferred maintenance.
Now, I do have a question from Evan Curris of 273 South Street, and I think this is actually more appropriate for the mayor to address, and it was, this is, are there opportunities for collaboration with neighboring towns to help navigate all the state and federal regulations that Donna referred to, and do other towns have similar positions that do the same thing, replication of redundancy? So, I think he's asking if there are efficiencies that can be gained by regionalization.
Well, I would just say, and I know the Director could address this as well, we are involved, for example, in a regional grant effort through PVPC, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, with several other communities working on stormwater-related issues together, trying to develop some software systems and some maintenance systems for how we're going to, because since we all have to now adapt to these new regulations, so we have done things like that. Generally, most of the communities around us have much smaller departments and much smaller infrastructure, and much different infrastructure. So, while we've collaborated with other communities on veterans and on other things like that, it's not really, other than those sort of bigger regulatory kinds of issues, there's not been a lot of regional stuff in terms of, you know, operations, for example. I'm not aware of many communities that have a shared DPW, for example, things like that. But we are definitely always looking for regionalization opportunities, and obviously, the work we're doing as part of this stormwater grant is an example of that, at least in the DPW arena.
Yeah, and I can elaborate on not just a little bit, this is part of the MS4 permit, again, which I think everyone's familiar with, and it's, we are collaborating with other communities through PVPC for stormwater mapping. So, basically, it's like asset management. So, part of our MS4 permit compliance is that we first have to identify what our assets are. Now, we have a very robust GIS system, but again, this, this needs to be, we need to be in compliance with the permit. So, this is something that's a necessary step for us to take to, to make sure that we're doing what we need to do.
Any other from...
No, but I'm excited we got, we got, I got a text.
How about from the folks that are here? Does anyone here have a particular question for the DPW Director on our budget? Please come forward so we can hear you near the microphone, and if you'll just hang out right there to be able to answer it. Just give us your name, address, and your question, and then let Donna return to answer it.
Wayne T. Bo, 830 Chesterfield Road, Florence. I know I've talked to Donna before, because I was involved in a group trying to save the Upper Roberts Meadow Dam, but I noticed in the budget that there was $250,000 towards the dam removal. Now, you probably don't know this, but years ago, when Terry Colhane, when they had the BPW, he said there was a million dollars in the enterprise fund to help pay for that, which you probably don't know, but there was a statement made, because the cost was going to be well over a million dollars. So, the 250, if we, if the cost is over a million dollars, do you know if the money's available in some fund or anything, or you probably wouldn't know that.
Actually, she'll need to come to the microphone, be heard by people, so if you, is that your full question?
Well, I have some other things pertaining to it, but that would be the justice.
All right.
So the $250,000 to which he refers is actually not in the budget. It was, what he's referring to is the capital plan. We have a million dollars' worth of encumbered funds in the water enterprise fund related to the removal of Upper Roberts Meadow Dam. We have spent some of those funds relating to permitting issues and engineering services. The $250,000 is not funded at this time.
All right. Any other questions, Counselor Vidwell?
Unless you-
Well, go ahead. I'll return to the-
Okay. On the matter of Upper Roberts Dam, is there any money in the budget that would pay for further study of the extent of silting accumulation? I ask that just because I encounter the opinion that there's been sufficient silting accumulated that the previous studies as to how dangerous would be the outcome of a catastrophic break are now out of date. And I never know how to answer that and I've just wondered if there's any plans for a study that would allow us either to refute that or confirm that.
What I would say to that is there has been considerable engineering study done on Upper Roberts Meadow Dam spanning many, many years, as you all know. We are, the dam is governed by the Office of Dam Safety. The Office of Dam Safety has designated this dam as a high-hazard dam. What that means is it needs to be removed or it needs to be repaired. The engineering studies that have been done have shown that it makes sense to remove it. Now, again, this is over many, many years. At this time, the city has invested a considerable amount of money and resources into the engineering studies. We currently await the results of an archaeological survey, which is under review by the Army Corps of Engineers. So at this time, the answer to your question is the engineering studies have been completed related to the removal of the dam and we await the approval of the regulating authority.
Any other, no, not Roberts Meadow. Any other questions on any other topics? Please come forward and just give us your name and address and your question.
Mike Horahan, 127 Roundhill Road. Just curious to know about whether this year's budget for DPW accounts for any of the corrections that had to be made to Pulaski Park, all the orange netting up and stuff? And whether Phase 2, are we under budget, are we on budget? Will that be covered in this year's?
Okay, we'll let Donna address that.
There is no accommodation in this year's budget for Pulaski Park because the project will be complete. We are happily on budget. The orange netting that you see up is the result of punch list from Phase 1. So this is something we're working through with the original contractor. So the only accommodation we've made in the budget for next year is more like on an operations piece, like, okay, we're going to need to spend more staff hours maintaining this.
So that anything that remains, any work that remains to make corrections to Phase 1, it's been covered under Phase 1, the contractor's making good on it? And so there's no more budgeted money for it from this point because the contractor's obligated to make right whatever isn't right at the-
That's correct, we have retainage.
Okay.
Date of completion.
There's no date of completion yet.
All right. Any other, any other questions and any new items? No? Any other questions from here or any other questions from the online folks? No, we're good. Just following up and seem satisfied with your answer. Thank you.
You got nothing?
I got nothing.
The coast is clear.
Crickets on the email front.
All right, thank you. Thank you, because we're a little behind schedule, so thank you for your, thank you for your time. Our next speaker is going to be from Central Services. David is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
See you. So it's been a busy year as normal for Central Services, extremely productive and fast-paced as normal with a tremendous amount of ongoing maintenance and operations being done in the buildings and the schools and the parking facilities every day of the week. And a whole slew of capital projects designed and implemented during fiscal '17. And that sort of pace and tenor will certainly continue for fiscal '18. I can talk more about capital projects at the end during questions. And what I'd like to do is just give you a brief overview of some of the highlights as I see them of the fiscal '18 budget and we'll go from there. So overall, small increase. I'll talk about the Central Services budget first and then talk about parking maintenance. So on the Central Services budget, small increase of about $15,000 from fiscal '17 to '18, pretty much evenly divided between some PS and some OM. On the PS side, personnel and staffing, no changes to the number of personnel. That's 14 people in Central Services. That includes administrative, the energy officer, management staff, and city-side custodial and maintenance. I'm not talking about the school maintenance and custodial, different budget, that's the NPS budget. We will continue as we have done for probably the last four or five years, covering some of the PS charges with a combination of funding from Smithfolk, city-side budget, NPS, and the DPW. We have staff, for example, the city electrician, the HVAC tech, the facilities project coordinator whose work covers pretty much all across the city. So we make up their budgets with contributions from some of the other entities besides the city budget. So again, no changes to staffing, just a lot of hard-working, happy people willing to come to work every day and do a good job for the city. Couple of points I want to make about the OM side of the budget. We have natural gas and electricity contracts that are both coming up for renewal the end of this October. We're finishing two-year contracts. We work with an energy solicitation brokering firm out of Boston to write our bids and solicitations and help us accrue both natural gas and electricity contracts. Depending on their advice, we will look at either 12, 24, or 36-month contracts. Depending on pricing and the parameters we set in the bid documents, we will both use what's called brown and green energy mixes on the electricity side. That process is underway right now. We'll be looking at signing contracts probably midsummer. And I don't know at this point whether they will be 12, 24, or 36-month contracts. It depends on market forces and market conditions going forward. And we really do rely on their technical expertise as far as how we bid this. And I work closely with Susan Wright in structuring what's best for the city as far as budget cycles versus what the pricing is coming back at. National Grid is raising their demand charges on our electricity pricing. This is something that has really started to spike in the last year. Working closely with Chris Mason in my office to understand what those charges are and how they're applied. Basically, demand charges cover peak usage on days when demand soars. And the demand charges are almost sort of an infrastructure cost that National Grid passes on to us for preserving and maintaining transmission lines, generating plants, substations in the event that peak usage will occur. If it doesn't occur, you still have to pay for having that facility and the infrastructure available. So we're seeing increases in demand charges, which to me is more than enough of an impetus for the city to continue to aggressively push implementing the energy efficiency and renewable programs that we are so well-known for. And we have a number of renewable technologies, solar programs that are ready to go. Chris is continuously working on efficiency programs to reduce our consumption in the buildings. But with the demand charge increases, it's even more reason to continue to push, especially on the efficiency side. The big energy news this year is that we did implement and complete the LED streetlight conversion project. That was a bonded project we did. We have received almost $250,000 in rebates and incentives from National Grid to help us to fray that cost. And if you look between fiscal '17's budget and fiscal '18, you will see a significant decrease in the projected cost for the streetlights. One of the things of interest about the old arrangement, besides the tariff we had to pay for the normal streetlights, the existing old streetlights, is that we also had to pay National Grid a $60,000 annual fee for maintenance to replace a lamp, reconnect an arm on a light, even if we didn't use it, didn't need their services. So that fee has now disappeared. We will be doing the maintenance on our own moving forward. We're working on how that'll work. But besides the rebates we're looking at and received, our consumption, kilowatt-hour consumption, which was just over 1.1 million kilowatt-hours just for streetlights, is going to drop to about 850,000, is going to drop by 850,000 kilowatts. So tremendous savings moving forward. And as you all know, the lifespan and life cycle of LED streetlights is multiple, multiple thousands of hours. So this is really a home run. It took us this long to implement this because we're under the guise of National Grid. All the surrounding communities are mass-electric, ever-source. And the rate tariffs in Boston just changed in the last year for National Grid. They finally said, yes, we'll do it. So it took us this long, but we're going to be seeing tremendous savings moving forward in a lot of different ways. A couple of notes on the OM side of the Central Services budget. You'll see an increase in the preventative maintenance and contracted services. Those are the contracts and vendor services we have to accrue. Some are code and regulatory-related, some are just we need to do it on an annual basis. That covers sprinkler systems, boilers, elevator inspections for the state, fire extinguishers and generators. So we have ongoing contracts. Most of our contracts now, we will go out to bid for one year and we build in two one-year extensions on the contracts. So if the service is fine, we'll renew. It helps us streamline the bid process. If we're not satisfied with the service, then we go out to bid the second year. And we're doing that more and more with our inspection services contracts. We're continuously looking for ways to improve the efficiency of both our internal operations and some of the more centralized programs that we run. We're going to be looking at a new work order system. We're working with the IT department on that. We just implemented a new copier program. We put in 15 new copiers across the city. We're working to try to get departments to realize that it's much more efficient and less costly to print to your copiers than it is to print to your printers. So with new machines, we have a five-year lease, no maintenance costs for the five years. So again, we're saving money and improving services and efficiency moving forward. Same with our office supply and custodial programs. We have both a school and city-side centralized program we've had for years, again, trying to improve the bidding and the costing of our supplies and how people are ordering and using them efficiently, as efficiently as possible. We just renewed our, for another three years, our trash contract with alternative recycling. This is for all city buildings and the schools. We have a new three-year contract with no price increase from alternative recycling. So they'll be continuing trash service and recycling and some composting services at the schools for the same price for another three fiscal years. On the parking side, again, small increase in the dollar amount between fiscal '17 and '18 in the budgets. Last year, we added a maintenance assistant to the parking maintenance staff. This is the position that used to be funded under the bid. Tom, as you've seen him working out on the streets, now works for the city in coordinating with the DNA. One guy doing a tremendous amount of work. He's at work at 3:00 in the morning, five days a week, four seasons a year, and he does a tremendous job. So his position will continue. Some of the other items, you might have seen small increases for repairs and maintenance. This is to cover some of the deferred maintenance we have in the gear parking garage. These are projects that are too small to be bid as capital projects. I'll talk about the capital projects in a second. And we continue to look at both implementing better maintenance and operations with the garage parking system. That system's now been in place for two years. We're continually tweaking that. And that's all I'll say about the parking system. Just a couple of points about capital projects and then I'll open it for questions. We have an aggressive capital program that is already underway. We'll be doing more MSBA work on roofs at Bridge Street and Leeds Elementary this summer. In fact, there was a walkthrough today for a pre-bid conference to get contractors to look at the buildings and give us pricing. That work will be done probably mid-September. We have a whole host of other school-related capital projects that'll be happening. We've got a number of city-side capital projects and we'll be doing more work in the garage this summer. Not as aggressive as the last three or four years' worth of work in the garage, some waterproofing, basically sealing everything that we've done, all the aggressive work over the last four years. So that's a quick rundown and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Counselor Dwight.
Recently, we had a presentation at the Energy and Sustainability Committee from Greenfield about aggregate green power. And the presentation included the fact that they can do competitive pricing. They can compete with anything that National Grid would pump out. There are fluctuations, of course, and variables. Is this your experience or have you, have we considered or discussed anything further beyond this first initial discussion about aggregate green power for the municipality?
It's on Chris Mason's agenda, counselor. We've talked about it. We all went through this with, on the NESC with the presentations and then the situation with Boston and looking at that and the cost-wise. It's something that Chris continues to monitor, but at this point, I don't have a lot of specifics on it. It's not totally active at this point.
Can I say some follow-ups on the LEDs?
Yes.
There was a lot of community conversation about the LEDs and their impacts and their experience. But one of the things that got kind of lost in the discussion was that at least there was a projected reduction of close to 71% consumption and about a 51% reduction in ambient light and light pollution. Has that been the experience now since the system's been implemented?
So I know Chris is monitoring and actually going out and doing light level readings. Every time he's gotten a request to come out and look at a particular light in a particular location, he'll go out and he'll do a foot candle assessment. We've had a couple of situations, I think, where we've actually gone in and installed shields, which became part of the whole process. And there's a form that a citizen can fill out and it gets reviewed. And there have been some shields that have been installed. But Chris is watching it. And my feeling is that based on the number of positive comments that Chris has gotten from people about what the cost savings are and what the consumption decrease is and how there's no resulting discussion about, yes, but it's so bright, or yes, it's too bright, it was the right move to make. And there really hasn't been a lot of backlash about it.
Thank you. Counselor.
Is there an update on changing the downtown or implementing a system in, on Main Street, essentially, for credit card payments or app payments for parking?
Mary, you want to address that?
Yeah, it's a multi-department project. It's not just the parking, not just Central Services. We've got three different departments working on it because we've got basically three different systems we have to marry together. We're currently looking at probably June until the system gets fully implemented. There's a hardware issue with building, getting the new internal hardware for the kiosks that, that, you know, David and his shop will work on. The, the treasurer collector's office had to also rebid or had to renew its contract for the handheld PEO devices, which have to be able to communicate to that. And then we're also working on a third contract with an app vendor, Park Mobile, which is, has to then talk to the other two and they all have to talk to each other. So we're, it got pretty complicated and we are working on the, we were actually reviewing screen, the LED screenshots, the, the language of all the screenshots. So we feel like we're in good shape. And actually, we're, we're thinking that the implementation will be at a good time of the summer, probably close to, you know, end of, you know, 4th of July-ish or end of, end of June timeframe when people will be, you know, it'll be a quieter time, let's just put it that way, for us to get out and get all that work done. So that's the update and we're looking forward to it. We think it's going to be a really successful system.
Working our way around, counselors, anything? Counselor Bittable?
When you refer to the, the mix of green and brown sources for electricity, what, what are our current percentages? Do you, do you have an idea of the green versus brown?
Sorry, I meant to grab the information on the mix when I came over and I don't have it, but I can certainly, or Chris will get that to you.
I'd just be curious what it is and how it compares to peer communities and sort of...
There is a mix.
State average, for example.
I'll get that for you.
All right, counselors, counselors, Counselor Klein, Counselor, Counselor Barge?
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're up.
Could you just give me a little update on the landfill on Glendale Road with the solar area?
So the installation is almost totally complete. Again, the DPW and Chris have been monitoring that project. We're at a point now where the paperwork and the interconnection agreements are wending their way through Boston, the DPU. I think that's the latest and almost the last step until everything goes live.
I want to thank you and your department for working tirelessly and I'm really impressed to see on the LD, LED lights. I have not had any complaints about the LED lights so far in Ward 6. I don't know though if you have, but to hear about the rebate, that's, that's fantastic. Thank you.
So Counselor Dwight indicates we don't have any online questions or any text questions. Anyone that's in the live audience here have any questions on the central services budget? Seeing no one? Thank you, Mr. Pomerantz, for coming to join us.
Thank you all, good to see you.
So next up, we have Chief, Chief Nichols. I see him in the back of the room from the Fire Department to do the fire rescue budget. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Kind of give you an overview of our budget for this coming year here. Basically, the fire rescue department, we provide basically fire rescue and EMS service to the city. Basically, our budget for this coming year increased 2.74% over last year. The majority of that is basically personal services, which was contractual raises where we settled the contract and just a slight raise in our, slight increase in our OM budget out through there. Basically, there's no reduction in staff or services that we're going to provide out there. We're still going to staff with 68 uniformed people to do our job out of both stations up there. And to give you some of the highlights from FY17 that we've done, through contractual bargaining, we eliminated what we always had, what we call the impact shift, where when we started into the EMS service for the city as a sole provider, it was really to cover peak periods, which was 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And through collective bargaining with the, the local, we're able to eliminate that. We did that because basically the service need for the city was that great that we needed to have three ambulances around the clock. When we had that, basically, we provided three ambulances during the daytime and at nighttime, we went to two ambulances. But call volume has increased so much that basically we needed to really provide those three ambulances around the clock. And through collective bargaining, we're able to eliminate that, put those four people that were on the impact shift on 24-hour shifts and thus were able to provide basically three ambulances 24/7 to the city, along with two fully staffed engine companies out there. Another, another highlight that we did for the city is through the Affordable Care Act, there's a reimbursement called CPE program. Basically, that's a little bit of kickback from Medicare. So when we do services, provide services to people with Medicare, basically they'll kick back a little bit to municipal ambulance services. My deputy chief of EMS, John Garapi, has done a tremendous amount of work pulling data together. He's worked with Susan Wright because they need to know all your expenditures, personal services, maintenance on trucks, what's it cost, and it's pretty detailed out there. I'm happy to say we should be getting back $94,000 in that reimbursement. And that's a lot of work to Deputy Garapi for pulling that together and making that work. Just to give you a quick update on our billing company, we transitioned two years ago over to Comstar. This does our EMS billing for the service that we provide out there. I'm very happy to say that we've been working really closely with them. Basically, our collection rate is about 93% in the city. That's really unheard of. Actually have a meeting with them tomorrow. There isn't many communities across the state that has such a high reimbursement rate for getting money from insurance companies for the service that we provide. Some of that was we instituted a better CQ and I program, which is basically quality control. That really led to kind of us doing some report writing and, and things like that for our people to help us document the calls better, which helps the billing and process there and getting that back quicker. Some of the other projects that we've covered this year, our new station alerting, I think you've probably seen that. I know it was covered in the newspaper and on TV quite a bit. It's really a station alerting system that alerts our people to a call. The kind of the neat thing about that is, is basically when the dispatcher takes a 911 call or a phone call for service, as soon as they start entering information into the CAD system, it, it automatically alerts the firefighters. It's a, it's a computer-generated voice. It gives us just a generic kind of call nature what it is, but the great thing to that is it basically increases our response time, gets our people moving to our apparatus and gets them out the door quicker and hopefully to the, the scene of the emergency in a, in a quick fashion out there. Just, I love facts. One of the things we have is our response time in the city, which is Florence, Leeds, downtown. We average five minutes from time of leaving the station to getting to the scene, which in some of the remote areas, I think that's pretty good. Downtown's certainly a little bit quicker, but it's kind of a neat fact that we have out there. We've also transitioned to using tablets, basically out in the field for inspections. We, we transitioned that, started that about two years ago. One of the neat things with that is, is we're out in the field. As we do the inspections, basically, we're entering the data. We don't have to go back to the station and do time-consuming of data entry in there. It's done right when we're out into the field and thus with that, we're also building out our database with our emergency reporting system. So we're collecting data, getting it done in a more efficient way and better use of our guys' time when they're out in the field. And that's worked very well for us. A few glitches on the technology end, but I think we've got that pretty well worked out. Just some other things, door access system. A couple of these, I have to give a lot of thanks to David Pomerantz in Central Services for helping us kind of work our way through that. But door access system, the old system we had, which is kind of the security system in the station, was failing. We couldn't get any more parts. Basically, if any of the hardware broke, we'd be out of luck, but we were able to secure money with that. And basically, this winter, we've got the new system installed, which base, provides a better access and security for the system out there. One of the things we did secure this year was a small grant and we ended up buying bulletproof vests. I hate to kind of say that, first responders out there, one of the things we really got to be concerned about is the safety for us as we go. And we looked at it a few years ago and kind of identified, just with society out there, I know we had the bombing in England yesterday. In Chelsea, they had a individual who barricaded himself inside a house and started on fire. And actually, a friend of mine out there was texting me pictures where the firefighters were fighting the fire with SWAT team members covering them, which is kind of unique and different out there. But I was glad we bought the vests. We were able to purchase eight of them and that's able to provide at least a level of protection for our people. And one of the big things that I'm very happy about is we ordered a new fire engine. Basically, that should be coming in probably October, November. And with that, it's got a new compressed air foam system on it. Basically, that's technology that uses foam to make an extinguishing agent. And probably the easiest way to explain it is it takes your water and extends it out three times. This truck will have 1,000 gallons of water. With the foam system that's on there, we'll get 3,000 gallons of extinguishing agent, which in the Florence and Leeds area, which doesn't have a municipal water system, should be a useful tool for our people. It's not the end-all, but it's, it's another technology use that hopefully will be beneficial if we have a fire out in that area. And some of the goals and highlights for FY18, looking at a new rescue boat. Basically, the one we have is an old government surplus. It's certainly, it needs a lot of repair. It's old military, parts are hard to come by. And basically, with that, we're, we're, should be able to secure a new rescue boat, which will provide a very good platform for our people on the river. As you've seen, the Connecticut River, there's a lot of activity out there now and this should work very well for us. We're going to buy two new 12-lead monitors. This is just to keep technology current for our people providing emergency medical care out there. And we're certainly looking to explore opportunities with new technology, which will help with us provide pre-hospital care for patients. And we're going to continue with our pre-fire plan program. We started that slow to get into that, but again, as I say, our database that we're working on, that we're getting all our information into, we're slowly working into that. Doing the inspections, getting the information added into the field, that's helping, but we really want to kind of start into kind of doing some pre-fire plans of some of the bigger target areas in the city that would help us out. With that, I'll, I'll open up the questions.
Sure, Counselor Barge, we'll let you be up first.
7,033 emergency incidents, that's an increase from last year.
Yes, every year, we're seeing an increase in there of our call volume and the majority of it, basically, it's almost like 70% of our calls are EMS. So it, it is going up every year and it, it's just what we have to deal with.
I want to thank you and your department again, okay? I mean, you know what you need for your department to save people's lives. And to me, I'll always support what is needed for a fire department or a police department for saving people's lives.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you.
Thank you.
What are we around, Counselor, Counselor Dwight?
25 structure fires, does that include the most recent that?
That, that was for 2016, so it'd be, it'd be January to December of 2016.
How's it looking this year?
This year, it, it's a little bit slow, but what we've had is there's kind of the dollar losses up there, a little bit higher. With that, we had the recent Graves Avenue fire. And what we're seeing is just home prices are, are going up, so that increases the fire damage, as Counselor Murphy knows.
So the final bill is more expensive, but I mean...
Yep.
The amount of call, the responses you guys are doing to structure fires historically has dropped.
Correct.
Because of prevention systems and, and the like and...
Yep.
And, and the outreach that the fire department's done. And then, but you see, correspondingly, you're seeing the EMS responses going up.
Yes, yep. Yeah, we're, we're currently seeing, and for some reason, this week, it's been kind of a phenomenon out there that we get four or five ambulance calls within like an hour. And then it's slow for a while and they kind of come in that way. But I, I think it's just society as, as a general, that people are more adapt to call 911 when they need some help and, and are willing to do that. And that's why we're seeing the increase in call volume basically every year.
And Dwayne, also historically, the overtime line on, for the fire department's always been, because of the variables that you guys are facing and stuff, how's, how's overtime looking this year?
The overtime this year is looking good. I feel very confident that we'll make it through this year and going into next year, I, I feel comfortable that, that we should be okay. And I always throw the caveat in there that, you know, if something big happened, you know, we may have to be look at that. But I, I'm confident this year we'll do well. I'm sure Susan's glad to hear that and the mayor. And next year, like I say, you know, barring a, a big major incident, I, I think we'll do very well with that also.
Did Round Hill count as a big major incident?
That was a major incident for us. That was very big.
Biggest I've seen in, in decades.
Yeah, that, that was one of the bigger fires I've seen in my career here, so unfortunately, nobody got hurt and, you know, we're, we're able to at least save the occupied side of the structure there. The guys did a great job with that. That was all on them. They did an excellent job.
We're going to... Counselor Bittable?
I, I was going to mention the Round Hill fire. I, I, in, in the weeks following, I heard nothing but praise from, from folks, including those that were really severely impacted.
Thank you.
About the performance of, of your department, police and building inspection. It was a huge event and we're all, it's not just luck, it was a lot of good, good, good professional attention that got us out of it. So my, my, my compliments again.
Thank you. I mean, one, one of the neat things that I'm really happy about, that I, I think we have a great relationship between police, fire and building. And I, I've never seen an emergency scene work so smoothly, I think, in the last couple of years, that it's, we all know our role, we know how to support one another and we do a great job with that. So I would, I would thank you for your praise and I also commend the police and building departments for, for their assistance on these scenes too.
Then I had a, a very quick unrelated question. When, when, when you talk about the, the call volume that's necessitated going to three units, three ambulance units around the clock, how, how much of that is opioid related?
I, I don't have the exact figures on that. I mean, it's interesting that we, we attended a forum a couple of weeks ago on that and what police have for data and what we have for data, because we, we call overdoses, it's not only opiates, but it could be medication overdoses and, and other things like that. So our numbers are, are kind of look bigger, but we don't categorize out, we don't spell out the opiates. But that's a, that's a huge thing in society out there today. That's a concern for us. One of the things that we're seeing is fentanyl, where they're cutting the heroin basically with that. And we're seeing across the, the country, where first responders going in to help someone who is overdosed are basically getting overdosed themselves because they're getting contaminated, whether it's on their skin or inhaling it, basically ODing while they're doing their service. So it's, it's a big concern for us and, and it's one of those things going forward that we're really paying a lot of attention to and want to take care of our people.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Can I ask a very, it's probably a technical question, but I just don't know what this is. Working out of grade, 31,000, that sets a personnel...
Basically, with that, what we have is a rank structure on a shift, is we have a deputy chief and then we have a captain in each station. Working out of grade is when we don't have to hire, we get to a minimum level. A firefighter may step up to a captain or a captain may step up to a deputy chief's role. So they, they kind of work...
For a temporary period.
Yeah, just for a temporary shift period. So they work above their class and they're compensated for that.
Yeah, so in the police department, there was a working out of class line and so maybe the city council, we're going to have working without class or something, but no, thank you. I assume I voted for this before, I just didn't know what the term was.
No, that's, that's a fair question.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Counselors, care.
Chief, the eight vests that you said you purchased, are those, are they sufficient for the amount of call volume that you're talking about?
Right now, they are. I know in my capital plan, two years out, I have some money allocated to probably purchase some more. But right now, I think this is what, basically what it does is it gets all my EMS people and the first due engine, at least some protection if we get to a scene that is volatile, that we need to protect ourselves. I, I hope, I really hope that in my career, I never have to see our people use those, but I, I felt it was a, an option that we really needed to look at and provide.
And, and I have a question, one that, that kind of applies to you and also to Chief Casper when she gets here. I noticed that you have a couple of vacancies, a couple of, three vacancies.
Yeah.
And one of the ways, both in police and fire, we control overtime is by having a full department so that there's a regular time person for, for every shift.
So two of the, two of those vacancies were retirements and one was a resignation. And actually, early in June, I have two more people retiring. And with that, we've completed the hiring process and mid-June, we're going to bring five new individuals onto the department to bring us up to full staff.
And it's great because I know both with, with your department and Chief Casper's department, the time from hire to actually taking a role in a shift with the training is, it takes a while, so we, you know, it's too bad we can't stay a little ahead of the game.
Yeah, we continually try. It's a challenge. Believe it or not, there is actually a kind of a shortage of paramedics out there and so, so we're trying to keep ahead of it. One of my deputy chiefs, Stephen Os, kind of runs the hiring process for me and, and he's, believe it or not, is continually working on it. Working with HR and I think we're going to be out advertising probably this summer to collect applications again to try to keep up and keep ahead of the game.
But at this point, the, the vacancies that are on the books now are foreseeable, the hires are in place to fill those?
Yes, yes, they're...
Excellent.
They'll be starting early June. They'll be starting early June, they'll cover those three vacancies and the two vacancies, so with the retirements that we'll have in June.
Excellent. So, Councilor, you say there's no one...
No email.
Anyone that's physically in the room have any questions for Chief Nichols on the fire department budget? No? Going, what's going, any more questions here? Excellent, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we go from one chief to another chief. Chief Casper's here, and we're timed to look at the police department budget, so. Good evening, Chief Casper, welcome.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. Thank you for having me. I'll point out a few changes to the budget. Our budget is very consistent to the FY17 budget, with a few slight differences. We're very excited that we settled our contract, so of course, you'll note a salary increase for everyone as a result of our three-year contract that we've just signed. Also, you may recall or seen in the news that we have a new administrative and community outreach sergeant, that's Cory Robinson. We didn't get a whole new position, but we transitioned an officer into that supervisory role, because frankly, the amount of administrative work that we have was burdening our other supervisors and not allowing them to go out onto the street and do their job. So we created this position so we could kind of take that heavy administrative load and put it onto him. So he's taken that. But you'll notice that change, he started in January, so he's been in that position already. Also, the vehicle budget, you may notice an increase on the cost per vehicle. One of the biggest cost differences per vehicle was that, as it turns out, the SUVs have a different repair history than the Crown Vix, i.e., they break down a little bit more. So we got a warranty, an extended warranty, which was about $2,000 per vehicle. Our fleet manager recommended that, because we were spending more than that on vehicle repairs. So that accounts for the largest chunk of that difference. Also, you may note that we have the part-time ACO on there. So we have the full-time animal control officer position. I never like to have any position where we don't have someone who is cross-trained, who doesn't know how to do the job, particularly a job like the animal control officer. That's an important job, and if she were to become sick or injured and we needed someone to fill in, we really wanted to have someone cross-trained to do that. So we have a, I'll call it part-time, but it's less than part-time hours. She works just a few hours a week, just to kind of keep her head in the game and know how to do the job, so that when our full-time ACO, Shayla Howe, is out of town, or on vacation, or at a training, or any other reason, can't work, we can have the second person step in and take over that job. So you'll see that small amount on there for 16,000 to cover her. Those were really the changes from the 17 budget. A few challenges I just want to point out that certainly have an impact on our budget. The political climate, I don't know if anyone's noticed, it's different, and I would say maybe a little unstable, and it has resulted in a variety of changes in our community. So we have a lot more protesting, a lot more marches, and a lot more large-scale gatherings, and those result in additional costs for our police department regarding traffic, security, kind of, also if we have people come into our community who are higher profile, involved in government, we have additional security concerns that we may not have had a few years ago. But we have kind of a heightened awareness of our climate and potential threats. So those events cost more money to manage. Also, addiction, which is something we've all been dealing with for a very long time, we continue to deal with that. We're working on a lot of front-end solutions. We're, you know, very involved with Hampshire Hope. We have our DART officers are out there identifying people who have overdose and trying to get them into substance recovery and other services. So we continue to not only deal with, you know, try to assist people who struggle with addiction, but also we deal with the crimes that they may ultimately commit, property crimes, breaking and entering into cars or businesses in order to support that habit. So it impacts us in many different ways. Last year, you may recall, we had 51 suspected overdoses. Those are overdoses just that we responded to at the police department. There may have been others that we did not respond to, because we were never called, or we didn't know about them, or they went right to the hospital. But we responded to 51. This year, so far, we've responded to 22. So we're just about right on par with where we were last year. And Chief Nichols did mention that, you know, we're seeing heroin mixed in with, fentanyl mixed in with heroin, so we're seeing some changes in the drugs that are out there. Also, technology, just in general, if I think about what kind of technology existed in our building when I was hired 20 years ago, and where we are now, it's a lot more. And the technology that we have includes both software and hardware. So that kind of equipment requires yearly contracts, constant replacement, training to know how to use it. It's, most of it is critical to the way that we do our jobs. It's become commonplace. If we didn't have it, it would be a lot of learning. We've become very reliant on it. But there's always new software to keep us up on all the different tasks that we have. Also, we're always working on community relations, trust and accountability. There's been a lot, of course, we all know this in our community, around immigration, sanctuary cities, race relations, so we've done a lot of work with training and education, having our officers, myself, involved in different community discussions, panels. So that's certainly something that we're constantly working on. Hiring and attracting new people to the field, although I'm pleased to report, in my exciting section at the end labeled "good news," I'll tell you that we're fully staffed. But nonetheless, we always like to plan ahead. As you folks pointed out, it does take a while to get from doing an interview to actually having someone who can work alone. It can be anywhere from eight months to a year, kind of depending on things. So we have noticed a decrease in the number of people applying to work on our police department, but that is a consistent trend across the Commonwealth and across the nation, just less people want to be police officers. You know, there's a lot of police officers in the news, and there's a lot of criticism of the way that, you know, police officers do their jobs. So, you know, I can understand an 18, or 19, or 20-year-old maybe being, choosing a different career path, something that might be a little less controversial. So we're seeing that, as I said, it is consistent, but we spend a good amount of time trying to recruit people who are local, who want to be here, who understand our community dynamics, and who want to make a long-term commitment to us. Finally, just in our list of ongoing challenges, traffic issues, always a challenge for us. Yes, we have speeders, we've talked about that, and there are concerns around our city and different areas that we continue to address. But beyond that, you know, impaired operators, distracted driving are major issues that we're always trying to deal with. We continue to have a high number of impaired operators on our streets by both drugs and alcohol. We have a lot of people texting and Facebooking and emailing while they're driving, and those continue to be problematic in motor vehicle accidents. And certainly in our community, a heightened concern because of the high number of pedestrians that we have. So that's just an overview of kind of the things that are on my front burner, I left off my back burner list. It's long. For stats, you have most of this data in front of you. In general, as I said, we are fully staffed. I think it's the first time we've been fully staffed in about 15 or 20 years, so we're very excited at that. There is a Massachusetts State Police Academy coming up, and we do sometimes have candidates from our department who opt to go to the state police. That could happen, we don't know, but for now, we're fully staffed, so I'm glad this meeting is today, and I can tell you that, and then I don't know, you never know tomorrow. We handled around 41,000 calls in calendar year last year. If you look back in 2006, we handled about 28,000 calls, so it's gone up quite a bit. We took 3,580 offense reports, 448 domestic violence, we had about 1,000 arrests, which is pretty much on par with years past. As I mentioned before about impaired operators, we had 140 impaired operator arrests. Interestingly, about 4% of those were for OUI drugs. We're certainly keeping an eye on if that may be impacted with medical marijuana, with recreational marijuana, and if we'll see any sort of change in those numbers. But for now, it's at about 4%. Our department was recognized in 2016 by MAD for Mothers Against Drunk Driving, for the enforcement of impaired operators that came out and gave the midnight shift an award. We're very proud of the work that they're doing out there. They've written nearly 5,000 citations as well. And we had about 585 motor vehicle collisions. That is always impacted by weather. We did not have a lot of snow this year, so therefore, that was a little bit down from years before. We registered 152 sex offenders, we processed 214 licenses to carry for firearms. So those are just a quick overview of some interesting numbers about our activity. As far as some good news, as I mentioned, our contracts are settled, I like that. Accreditation, you may recall, or you may not, that in 2002, we're only the sixth police department in the Commonwealth to become accredited, and we are up for re-accreditation again in a week or two. They'll be in doing the assessment, so we're bracing ourselves for that. Also, in 2016, we joined the White House Police Data Initiative, and we've been working on transparency with our data. That has been a really valuable tool. We've gotten a lot of accolades for that from all over the place. You may recall, my captain and I were down in Washington DC and had the opportunity to present some of our data at the White House, it was pretty nice. And we continue to get a lot of calls, and people write about the way that we ran that program, because we involve the citizens in that, and we have really unique and interesting data. I use it all the time. Whenever I need to know a number, I go onto it. I refer, people call me and ask me, oh, I need this data. It's already on there. So it's been a good tool for us for reducing the work that we have to do when people call, because it's all already there, so I like that. Retention is doing really well. We lost zero officers so far in 2017. And last year, we only lost three, and two of those were full retirements, which is always how we want to see someone go. We always want to have someone have a nice, long career with us. So, I mean, before, in some years past, we've lost as many as 10, and nine, and five, so we were losing some high numbers. Those are very costly numbers to lose, for a variety of reasons, even beyond the financial cost, but just the impact that has on the department. So our retention is excellent. Our firing range is nearly done. We're very excited, it's looking great. I walk down there daily to check on it. It's doing well. We've done a lot with community outreach efforts. I'm sure you've noticed a lot of our efforts covered in either social media or in the news. We have fishing derbies, we have, we had Police Day, we have a lot of community liaison officers. We've been very busy in lots of different ways than that. I mentioned our DART program. They've been very busy working with people who have overdosed. They reach out to them and try to connect them to services, so they've been well. Training, we have been very busy training our officers as well. We averaged about 138 hours of training per officer last year, which is a really high number for a police department. I can't give you a comparison statistic, but I can tell you that it's high. So we're very proud of the emphasis that we're putting on training. We have a training coordinator who is excellent at finding inexpensive or free training, which is one of my favorites, and still really good quality. So we're doing well there. We're continuing to work on diversifying our staff. I can tell you that there was a time before 2015, out of our department of 65 police officers, there were only three women. So since February 2015, we've had 12 people that are still with our department hired since then, and five of them are women, so that's a lot for us. Pretty excited about that. DB staffing, we've rotated a position into the detective bureau, so the detective bureau has some additional support, and it also provides kind of a bridge between patrol and investigations. So we've got a lot of things going on, we're a busy place. In general, the staff is fantastic. I feel lucky to work with one of the best police departments. I can't say enough good things. They're, I always ask them, do you mind doing this? Can you do this? Do you want to be a liaison? Will you be on this board, this executive committee? They continue to do it, and I don't pay them anymore. But they're great about it. And they're involved in their own personal communities as well, being youth coaches and, you know, involved in their schools and volunteerism and all that. So really a great group of people. I feel lucky to work with them. That's an overview of my budget.
So we'll start on this side and come around this way, there's time questions on this side. Councilor...
I'm sorry. Did you...
Go ahead, Councilor Skerr.
Can you give a little bit more of a detailed update on the firing range?
Yes, the firing range. So we have put in, there's been two major components of it. There's an air wall that we put in the back, which draws the air through the range, and then there is a, all the equipment that's in the range, things that we shoot at, and baffles and tiles and all that sort of thing. We have run into a snag with part of the ventilation system that we're working on remedying. We should have answers on that soon, but right now, it's a snag. So we'll see what happens, but we're optimistic that it will still be finished soon. Yeah.
Councilor O'Donnell.
If you had a, I believe you have one speed trailer, right?
I do.
Okay.
Yes.
If you had more, could you use them effectively? I feel like the, I don't have information, but I feel like they're effective.
That's a great question, yes. So speed trailers, ideally, I think if we put, I don't know why people keep speeding. I ask myself this, I can't fall asleep at night sometimes, wondering why...
Assume you talk to them.
Stop speeding, yeah.
To ask them.
We write a lot of tickets, we pull over a lot of people, there's a lot of community involvement, and say, stop speeding. People make signs, people stand on the street, we do a lot of things, but people just keep speeding. So, yeah, we put signs out, and that does have an impact on streets. We have one that we got quite a long time ago. I actually just purchased a new sign that is not as big as a trailer, but it has the exact same function. I like it because it's small, it's very easy, it's not on a big trailer, we don't need to hook it onto a tow hook. You just grab it, and you can put it up on a sign and have it be in a community. So this one will be a little bit easier to move around as the demand, you know, we have always demands in the summer for people who want this on their streets. I know Cardinal Way...
Yes.
Cardinal Way, this is a perfect sign for Cardinal Way. But we have a number of streets that are just kind of frequent flyers in our complaint area, so I think this sign will be really good for moving around, but I do think it has an impact.
So now you have two. You haven't retired the other one, you haven't...
No, we're going to keep plugging that around. It's really big, it runs on really big batteries. It's old, I mean, it's, I think it's like around 15 years old, but I can't be sure.
It's about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because the city paid 11,000.
Yeah, yes.
So, Councilor Carney?
Oh, my question was, I know it's in the capital improvement plan, what's the projected timeline for the animal control facility?
I would classify it as up in the air right now.
Okay.
I can't say. We're working on, we've certainly talked about it, and we're working on different site ideas. So that's where we are.
So we're in the infancy stage?
Yeah, toddler, maybe. I mean, we've been talking about it a while, so yeah, but we don't, we don't have a good firm site yet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Goodell, did you have a question? As we move on, Councilor Gray?
More of a statement. I actually very much appreciate the nuanced understanding of shifting times and shifting circumstances without overreacting, but at the same time, being proactive. And it's become a hallmark of this department, and I just felt it was worth noting, citing, and commending. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilor Klein, do you have any questions for the chief? Counselor, well, actually, we'll let Councilor Barge go. Councilor Nash has just arrived, and he's getting settled, so Councilor Barge.
I want to thank you and your department, and to be honest with you, I would not want to be a police officer today.
So you're not going to be on our recruiting list?
Ah, I'm not wanting to.
You're not, Al.
But I want to thank your department, and I think you should be prepared, because there's going to be many more marches that are going to come forth. The way this world is going, and what's happening in Washington, has made many people upset again. And you're going to find more and more of your budget with overtime, all the cities. But I thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Nash, now that you've settled in, do you have any questions for...
Not at this time.
Can I just ask Councilor Nash to certify he didn't speed on his way from Ohio?
My kids were driving.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I can guarantee, you know, the shifts are doing a good job. You wouldn't have made it here. Once you hit the city line, they would have got you if you were speeding, I know.
I was hoping the mayor's chopper could come.
Oh, yeah, right.
And I just wanted to point out, you know, one of the reasons we talk about the range range is when the police department had to leave site to train, it often involved scheduling and overtime. And, you know, it was an expensive process to state. They didn't, they doubled the number of shooting days they have to spend. So it was getting expensive. And now that we get the system set up, it'll be a better system in the building and they can train around their shifts. It should cut down on some overtime. So it was an important addition to the station because of the scheduling flexibility that it adds and the different options and training that it adds. It's a pretty sophisticated facility, not to mention that it finally, you know, we can finally close the book on the, on the construction of the new facility. But I think it'll be great that it'll, the training opportunities will increase, the trading overtime for firearms will decrease, and it'll be better training because it'll be high-tech facility. So Counselor, do you have any online questions for Chief Casper?
Nope.
Survey says no. How about folks present in the room? Does anybody here have a question for Chief Casper relative to her budget? Please come, come up and give us your name and address and ask your question and then let the Chief come back in and answer.
Hi, I'm Amber Abdallah. I live at 245 Main Street, right above Viva Pasta and across the street from the park. So I suppose my question relates to, have you noticed an increase of incidents now that the park has been revamped in terms of the crosswalk traffic, as well as perhaps have you considered increasing the officers in the late-night beat throughout Pulaski Park? I have a little dog. I'm constantly in the park and I'm constantly walking back and forth. And I've noticed that people, I'm a little nervous as I cross. And you were saying incidences in speeding. Perhaps we could make a bigger sign. I don't know if this is a cross question with the mayor, with public works, but the one little crosswalk sign is not sufficient. It is kind of scary. I noticed, I witnessed a dog get hit. So I carry my little dog across the street. And late night, I do notice there is some little bit scary riffraff and not too much of a police presence. This is a safe community. I feel generally very safe. But I am curious, now that the park is more popular and clean and really nice, if perhaps you might send some officers through late night as well. Thank you.
Try and relate that to the budget, Chief.
No problem. Everything's about the budget. Yeah. Thank you for the question. I've been told I'm supposed to face this way, but I heard you and I'm with you. So, yeah, the park has been, I love the park. Certainly, we, I think the climate of the park has changed quite a bit in a very positive way. It's opened up in there. The lighting is better. And there's a lot of people who go in there to stop and have their ice cream or have a snack or eat. And I think in general, the climate of the park already, I've noticed anyway, an improvement in, in how people feel walking through the park, just chatting with folks and kind of watching it myself. We haven't had any incidents in the park of significance that I can think of. We're just coming into the warmer weather. But the park in general has been, it's a great place, very safe for dogs and people. And, you know, I don't anticipate any major problems as we open up that back area with the new sidewalk that's going down. I think the changes that have gone into place in the park have made it a much better, open, safe place. As far as the crosswalk goes, that's not a crosswalk that we in general have had a lot of incidents on, not to say that cars always stop. But we haven't in general. I think there's a good line of sight there and some, it's hard to not talk to her when she asks a question. But so, yeah, and we do have a sign out there, I believe, right? Is there a pedestrian sign in the middle?
There is in the middle. People do zoom by.
Yes. And that's one of those things that I fall asleep at night thinking about is why people don't stop at crosswalks. But I do get that certainly, you know, lighting and design factors always have an impact. So I'll keep that in mind. You're so welcome.
And one other, one other number I want to compliment you on that was, that was in your cover letter, is that your detectives have an 85% rate for solving the things that come across their desks, which I think is, which I think is excellent.
They're fantastic.
Above the national average. And I know most, most of the people I've spoken to that dealt with them said they're very compassionate and very committed to do what they do, provide good customer service to people who, if they've been victims of crime, are distressed. And I think they feel like they, they get attention and they get consideration. And 85% of the time, they get their crimes solved. So it's a good deal.
Yeah, they do a great job.
Anything else for Chief Casper? Any other questions from the audience for Chief Casper? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So we're a tad ahead of schedule here, but I see that Superintendent Provost is with us, expecting the schools to have their share of questions. So why don't you come up and join us? Welcome.
Sorry.
You have our largest budget, so we've got a little extra time to spend with you. So good evening.
Thank you.
Superintendent Provost, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this budget again. It's been a few months since I discussed it. So I may seem a little rusty, but I spent some time reviewing it. And thanks for saving the best for last. Just to go over a few of the highlights, it's a $28,838,966 budget. It's an increase of 3.04% from last year. The main highlight that has been discussed at length in each of the individual buildings and in district-wide meetings and in the media is the elementary reorganization. It's a strategy that we have implemented several times, actually, in each of the last three budgets that I've been a part of, of reallocating resources within the budget to try to address the needs we have. One of the things that is challenging about creating a school budget is you're really trying to project ahead about 15 or 16 months and figure out where the schools will be at that time. And the budget is your one piece, your one opportunity in the school year to sort of put all your chess pieces on the board where you think you're going to be able to use them to best effect. So this year, we had an elementary reorganization in which we reduced 23 ESPs in order to increase six and a half special education teachers. This was accomplished without layoffs. We knew at the time that we did the reductions that we had eight separations coming up, either through retirements or people moving to other jobs. And so we had created 15 positions for ESPs as building-based subs so that we could carry them forward without layoffs. We also did that knowing how high the turnover is in our ESP workforce, that we would need all those people by the end of the year. And instead of laying them off and then calling them back, we figured it would be better for them and for us to keep them on board. Since the time the budget was passed, three of the 15 have been assigned to permanent jobs because we've lost other ESPs in the district. So now we're down to 12. Another important component of the budget is Math Investigations 3. It's a revamping of our elementary math curriculum. We currently do Math Investigations 2, which is a curriculum that really hasn't been adjusted to reflect the updates in the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. Making the, making the update is costly because it's something that involves all four schools and involves all six grades. So the materials cost of that is about $125,000. That is something that you all made possible by allowing the books to be included in the capital budget. So I want to thank you for that. Also, we're increasing our, or expanding our Global STEM program. Probably read about Global STEM in the Gazette last week. It's currently a program that we have at JFK and Jackson Street. Next year, it will add a third site at Ryan Road. Students from both schools were actually involved in a 90-minute conference with one of the NASA Mars scientists today, which they all found really amazing. You know, it's one thing to ask your teacher, will we ever have people on Mars? It's another thing to ask the people who are actually putting the plans in place to have people on Mars. And so that's been, I think, a really motivating experience for our kids. And it's something that's really opening up new opportunities for them. And what I like best about it is the model is two schools from different countries working together with a science partner. So there's a great deal of cultural exchange as well. Currently, we're working with a school in Coventry. Our hope is that we could expand to a school in India. When you think of preparing kids, okay, so now we're not thinking 16 months down the road, but maybe 16 years down the road and thinking of them for the kinds of opportunities that are going to be out there for them. I think it's important that we get out of the North American sort of bubble, if you will. And so I'm hoping that we have a connection with India next year, definitely thinking that Asia is where the action will be for our students when they graduate. And also hoping that we can get connected to the global south. Also in this budget, we increased subrates to keep pace with, with minimum wage. And we're also increasing bandwidth, which is important, has really become an important aspect of programming at schools. As you all know, through prior capital projects, we implemented Wi-Fi wall-to-wall throughout the district. However, one of the things that we realized was even though our Wi-Fi network was very robust, the pipe they were getting out to the internet on wasn't wide enough. So we're looking at a tenfold increase in bandwidth next year. That's a cost of about $60,000. But if you're going to have students video conferencing with peers from across the ocean and other partners, we're finding that that's really an important tool for learning. So that's included in this. This project, or this budget does not include some money for refugee education. That's been sort of sequestered in a supplemental possibility, which we've discussed with the mayor. And the reason for that is it, the refugee picture has been very uncertain. Windows open, people move in, windows close, all the movement stops. So far, we haven't had any school-aged refugees. We do have one who will be school-aged in two years. And we really, at this point in time, don't know whether or not we're going to have the ability to relocate refugees who are school-aged for next year. So we decided not to build that into the budget, but to take a wait-and-see approach with the ability to come back for a supplemental possible funding if that becomes necessary. And then finally, I would just like to point out that much like the city has a stability plan, we have stability plan in the school, using our choice reserves as sort of our complement to the city's reserves. And we also are looking at a fiscal cliff that hits in FY '21. So that's the budget in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And before we take questions, I'd just like to point out to everyone that there is a school committee and that they're the ones that actually have control over line item things in the budget. That this, the city council deals with the total allocation to the school department. The school committee deals with line item changes in the budget with decisions like implementing reorganization to the elementary schools. So this body, again, all we can do is cut the budget. We never cut the school budget. So specific, you know, specific questions in this forum about adding a teacher here or moving something there, this is not the proper venue for that, since that's the bailiwick of the school committee. And they work very hard at that. So let me start, we'll start with Counselor Barge this time and go around this way. Do you have any questions for Superintendent?
Just looking at the budget itself, I feel that it's really not enough of money because you can tell. I mean, you did make some cuts, correct?
We should get some questions.
So how about the cooking teacher's position at the high school? Is that gone now? Is that eliminated?
Yes, we decided not to continue that program. We kept the position at the high school. It actually was reduced somewhat. It was already a part-time position and we reduced it a little bit more because we had some other places in the, in the budget where we wanted to direct those funds. That, the remaining portion of that position will be used for special education because the high school is seeing that it has the same kind of changing needs that we've discussed with the rest of the schools. They're a little bit further out on the wave, if you will. So it hasn't really come to the high school yet, but they're starting to see a change. And we also, we also just looked at what we were able to provide within the culinary arts program at the high school. And it was, not to, not to make a pun, but it was just sort of a taste of what was available. And, you know, for kids who really want to have a strong culinary arts experience, they're Smith-Vogue. And we can't replicate that. We didn't want to try to replicate that. We felt that we could use the resources better for some of the needed kids coming to high school.
Okay, Counselor Nash, you're settled in now. Do you have any questions for Superintendent?
Well, I just want to say, and I said this the other day on the radio with the mayor, that I'm so impressed that here we are at budget time and we're, we're talking about proactive planning for the next year. We have an idea of what the budget's going to be. Teachers aren't getting pink slips because we're, we're trying to, you know, we're, we're playing poker to figure out the budget. And it's really refreshing, this, this whole reorganization with the elementary school special ed, you know, it's, it's thinking forward. It's thinking within the money that you have. And, you know, I commend you and the mayor and Susan Wright for pulling all of this together. It's really cool. So, so my question is, because we just voted on a resolution around living wages the other week, and that the subrates are at minimum wage right now. And I'm wondering if, if at some point, we're talking about turning that into a living wage?
Well, I'm not sure what the difference in terms of dollars between minimum wage and living wage is. We have made a commitment to try to keep the subrates on par, at least with minimum wage, which has been a struggle for us. You know, we increased it last year. We increased it this year. I would suspect we'll probably increase it next year. But that's just to keep up with minimum wage. I don't think it would be truthful for me to say here that I felt that I would be recommending to the school committee to take whatever step is needed to go from minimum wage to living wage for subs, just because in the context of all the rest of the needs of the budget, my own, my own opinion would be that some of the other needs, I think, would come before that.
Counselor Klein, do you have a question?
A quick question. So you talk about the fiscal cliff showing up in FY 2021. And we've heard from the mayor that the fiscal cliff overall for the city would be fiscal year 2020. Is that, does that sound right?
2021.
So are we looking at 2021? I mean, how has Proposition 2 and 1/2 that was passed in 2014 kind of affected that? And has it given us extra years?
You mean the override?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sorry, the override.
2 and 1/2 passed a little while.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
I'm not really sure that's a question for a department head. Might be more a mayor question, but.
Do you want me to try to answer? So what I, what I'll say is that we've tried to be good stewards of the money. When we first did our five-year projection, we were looking at a cliff that came much earlier. I think the first time we took a look at this, we felt it would hit around probably 18 or 19. We were able to make some adjustments in last year's budget and also make some adjustments with this budget that have been able to push that out. Some of the changes really have been in school choice. We had some money at the end of last year that came through what's known as the special ed increment, which is additional funding that we receive for students with disabilities who we take through choice. We held on to that money. So that pushed out the cliff a little bit. This year, we're anticipating that we're going to get a similar increment, which pushes out the cliff a little bit farther. So we can't make it last forever, but we're trying to make it last as long as we can in a way that I think is very similar to the way you all are implementing the budget for the city.
Counselor, go ahead.
As I've said before, essentially, the budget is, despite its dryness, is a moral document. It's an expression of what the community's values are, where we, where we choose to invest. And as represented in this budget, which is over 51% is to schools and actually more if you include pension and other liabilities, the fact remains it's still never enough, in fact, to meet what we most aspire to. So, and recently, of course, you've already addressed this on some level and Counselor Nash addressed this as well. Of course, there was, there was a bit of a controversy because what you proposed was a significant change. Important fact, it should be noted, what you proposed is best practices, which was to provide for an inclusive experience for everyone who attends the Northampton schools with professional, access to professional services. And you have set a new gold standard for the way the school works. I understand that there was some consternation. It always comes with every significant change, and this was a significant change. And, and the one thing I do want to address is that on social media, which we know is not the best propagation point for good information, let's say, there was suggestion at one point that there's a 60% or 66% reduction in, in employee services in the school system. And if you could just clear the air on that one point, that'd be great.
I'm going to resist the urge to call it fake news or alternate facts.
I'll say that.
I'll just say that it's incorrect. If you look, even within our ESP unit, which is the unit that would be most affected, we're not talking about a 66% reduction. Within the ESP unit, we're reducing probably more along the lines of 20%. But that's to add teachers. So overall, there, there is a lower head count in this budget than there was in the prior budget. But that's because it reflects a strategy of reducing some lower-paid employees in order to hire more higher-paid employees. And that's really the only difference.
Thank you. Counselor Carney?
Yes. I know you and your staff have been involved in some of the conversations about the, the Blue Community Resolution that's been, that's passed on first reading. And though it's not law, it's just aspiration. Nonetheless, the aspiration is that over time, the availability and the sale of sing- Nonetheless, the aspiration is that over time, the availability and the sale of single-use plastic water bottles in municipal facilities would be phased out. And we had, we did that knowing that the department most affected, both in terms of use and some dollar impacts, would be the, would be the schools. I'm just, I'm just curious if you, you're comfortable with the, the possibility that that be implemented over time with a minimal budget impact?
One thing that I would like to bring to the council's attention is the strong position that the school committee has taken on lunch shaming, which is the practice that you may have heard in the news of doing something to designate students with unpaid lunch bills that can be stigmatizing. You know, there are schools that, that provide a different kind of lunch, there are schools that have little stamps they put on kids who have a, have the negative balance. But our committee said, no, that's not going to happen here. And as a result, we do have some bad debt. And one of the changes in the federal school lunch program said that we can't have bad debt at the end of the year. So school committee has to take money from its, its budget in order to cover the bad debt. Doesn't forgive it, that we still go after people who owe us money. But it does mean that that leaves less funding for the rest of the school program. So one of the things that we've been able to do to sort of address the issue of bad debt is by increasing revenue through à la carte sales. One of the pieces of à la carte sales that have been very effective for us this year has been water sales. And so my discussions, my discussions with the gentleman who's sort of the driving force behind the Blue, Blue Communities has been, we can reach a middle ground here, but at this point, I can't really abide by a ban on, on selling water because it's the sale of the water that's covering the debt, so the school committee doesn't have to backfill it so that we don't have to take resources away from kids. So there may be other solutions. We're looking at fundraising for bad debt and we're looking at other ways of trying to make the school lunch program more, I, I shouldn't say viable because it is viable, but it has this problem that other businesses have in a different way, which is, you know, how to address the debt. So we, basically where we, where we ended up with that was that we could be supportive of fill stations and we could work together on that. But at this point, we're not comfortable with a ban because we know that it would end up just taking resources away from students.
Thank you. And of course, we, we don't regard it as a ban, we regard it as a, as a, as an objective down the road to shoot for. But, but that, that explanation's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. My understanding, maybe I'm wrong, is that the way, the method of counting to determine eligibility for free and reduced lunch is changing or may change. And I just think, briefly editorialize, thank you for your comments about standing, and for the school committee for standing against lunch shaming. Kids shouldn't have to endure that, but it's, despite your efforts, it says something that you have to sell water bottles and other things to make up the difference. And it's a shame that the state doesn't step in and provide that. So I'm just wondering, given, but the specific question is, given the changes in the, in the counting, are you going to be under new pressure financially in terms of free and reduced lunch?
I have not heard that the methodology of, of qualifying students for free and reduced lunch is changing. We do have the Open Gateway, which is a computerized system that connects all the different support networks in the state, which helps us to identify kids. What the change that I'm, I'm connecting with from what you're saying is, free and reduced lunch was the measure that was used to identify economic need in Massachusetts. About two years ago, that changed from free and reduced to what's now known as economically disadvantaged. The economically disadvantaged standard is much higher. It was something that didn't make a lot of sense. On the face of it, it looked like a way of sort of creating a better picture because we went from, you know, more than 40% of kids eligible for free and reduced lunch to 28% of kids economically disadvantaged. It was the same level of economic wealth and, and the same kids, but it was a different metric. So I, but I think it's important, and I'll just say this since public may be watching, that you don't have to be economically disadvantaged in order to qualify for free and reduced lunch. That standard is still the same. We have a lot of kids who qualify for free and reduced lunch who are not considered economically disadvantaged under the new metric and will continue to make them, to seek them out. It's one of the strategies to address debt because obviously, once a family becomes eligible for free and reduced lunch, then they can't accumulate any further debt. And it's also just a way to try to help families make sure that kids are well-fed. So what I, what I foresee in terms of changes to the federal school lunch program is more around the components of the program. I haven't seen the exact new proposed regulations, but I know that there's been concern under the current administration to sort of roll back some of the regulations that were put in place in an interest to try to make school lunches more helpful. So that's, that's where I see the, the change likely to come in the school lunch program.
Well, thank you for your attention to all that.
Yes. So just to sort of beat this point, no, no ESPs are going to be losing their jobs. We're just not hiring to fill positions that normally are lost for attrition, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then my other question is, so the one, one position that isn't going to be funded for the next year is the, the librarians in the four elements, so two librarians split between the four elementary schools. Do you anticipate, I mean, it's hard to imagine to the future, but do you anticipate that until we reach that cliff and need to deal with that, that those positions will remain unfilled?
I think if we, if we're, to think about that again, we have to think about restructuring the position. The reason that we ended up reducing them was not really to make the other things work. It was because we didn't get the value add we thought we were going to get from those positions. Principals said that using them halftime, the way we had set it up, it was either two half day, you know, a half day at each building or three days and two days and then they would switch, just really wasn't a appreciable change from what they had when the, when the library was being run by ESPs. So that was why we went back to running the library with ESPs. That's one of the places where we created new ESP positions that absorbed some of the people who are coming from programs from the prior ESP positions. So I, I think of it not as an economic thing. I think of it as if we're going to redo elementary librarians, we have to make sure that it gives us the learning benefit for the public dollar we're spending on it.
And at least some of the schools, if not all of the schools, are working to redo their libraries too. So is that part of, is that part of the thinking of how, how to just use those spaces more efficiently and use staff more efficiently in those spaces?
The, sort of the trend in school libraries is to be much more kid-focused and to be much more interactive. Both of the schools that are looking at new library spaces are experimenting with Makerspace ideas, which are basically places where you put technology and things that kids like to tinker with and let them go at it. So that's kind of a new concept in libraries. And then the other piece is making them much more electronic. Not that books and magazines are ever going to go away, but a lot of the content that kids are accessing, they're accessing electronically. So you think of computer racks and tablet racks and all kinds of features that don't exist in our current libraries. So again, you know, if we redo it, it, again, you know, you think about, do we want sort of a traditional school librarian or do we want more of a library media specialist or someone with even a technology background? So that may be in the future at some point, but I would just say that the answer for the librarians is they didn't work out like we thought they would. We gave it a try and we evaluate things and if they're not working to our satisfaction, we try again.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Any questions? Cyberland.
Cyberland is silent.
Cyberland is silent. Unsmoke, bust. How about from the crowd here in the room? Anybody have a question for the superintendent?
I don't know if we've identified a city or a school in Indiana.
All right, good.
And just because it came up, this is the first time we've talked about, like this is the first time I've heard it, the fiscal cliff. But what, what we're kind of talking about is the longevity we'd get out of our last general override, which has lasted longer than I thought it would. And I'd like to assure people that both on the school side and the city side, you know, we, we, and the mayor's office and the department has done what they can to stretch that money as long as they can. But I think it's realistic to expect that, that that stretch will eventually run out, '21 maybe, 2021. And if it's '21, we'll be dealing with it in '20 when we do the '21 budget. I don't want to assure people, we, we have been good stewards of the money they gave us with the last general override, that we've gotten more life out than we thought we would, but it will come to an end at some point in time and people will have to examine their resources and their aspirations because something will eventually show up to say, if you want us to continue to provide the services that we've been providing, that we're going to have to go back and ask for the funds to do it for another extended period of time. So it's out there and I'm glad we're addressing it now, both on the school side and on the general government side, so that we, our eyes wide open and know when the time comes. So thank you, Superintendent Provost. And we appear to be pretty much right on time. And it's time for our second superintendent to come on down and.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kevin Farm, you're Midroom Superintendent at Smith Vocational Agricultural High School. And it is my first time in my almost 40-year career in career and technical education that I've been the second superintendent in a, in a municipality or in a region. I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank John Provost and the Board of Trustees, as well as the council for, for all the help this year and as we transition and get ready to hopefully select the next permanent superintendent for your premier independent vocational agricultural schools. You noticed it's the only independent vocational agricultural school in the Commonwealth. We've taken a close look at that, at that governance structure and we're speaking with local legislators, state legislators, in order to find out what works best for the trustees, for the community of Northampton and for the children who obviously attend that wonderful school of 108-year history. Currently, in this particular budget, we were able to identify some areas that were in a, needed a great deal of attention. And those areas were acad, vocational programming that only had one teacher with a vocational aide. And I found that somewhat troubling and in order to be in full compliance with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and because we had the tuition revolving funds from our, our sending students that come in from the surrounding areas, we're able to add some teaching positions for next year in areas where we're having strong student enrollment, areas like agricultural mechanics. And I will tell you that we are focusing on the mission of Smith Vocational and Agricultural School because that's what it was founded on and we want to stay true to the will and to accent the agricultural, agricultural mechanics, animal science, landscape horticulture, and down the road in the future, looking at other agricultural programs like environmental science and technology, which takes into account water quality and wastewater treatment, to provide those kinds of skills into the workforce in the area. We've also, because we, we solved the teacher's contract, I'm happy to say, we added 25 minutes to the school day. We had one of the shortest high school school days of anyone in the Commonwealth. And when we, we have them, we need to have them there for a sufficient amount of time. So we were able to settle the contract, add 25 minutes to the school day. And I believe it, it cost the district $70,000 overall for all of our staff to be able to do that. At, at the same time, we saw a, a small increase in, as you can see on the screen, a small increase in chapter 70, based on the fact that we had 106 students from Northampton and about, about 370 students or so from, from our other surrounding communities. Last year, it was budgeted for about 330 tuition students at $17,000 per student. And going forward, we're budgeting for 375 tuition-paying students for next year at $16,728 per student, which is the state-designated tuition rate based on the formula that they use from year to year. I did read the letter that the, the mayor had written a couple of years ago regarding the fairness of some of the net school spending, and I want to speak with him more on that and advocate for his position at, at DESI because it really doesn't harm us, but it would help Northampton, I believe. So we'll, we'll have more conversations on that. Let's see if we got a few things here that I've forgotten. The budget seems like it's grown quite a bit, but then again, we're trying to accomplish a lot of things. Because we were able to add the 25 minutes to the school day, we actually add an additional period to our day on our academic side. So for the first time ever, we're able to offer Spanish to our students. And in our society today, and especially in the world of work, whether it be our, our health technology students or our criminal justice students, being able to communicate with everyone in our community, I think, is very important. So that's something that's been in our school improvement plan for quite a while since 2014. And we'll also assist with college readiness and access. The students also weighed in on this and we found that the students really wanted to have that language option for them as well. Over 60% of our budget is instructional with, with faculty. And obviously, that was voted on by the Board of Trustees and moved forward. We, we look, that the future is bright under the current model where we are a department of the city, but we act very entrepreneurially. We look to attract students from the surrounding communities because those funds do help defray the cost of running our, our school. We're not, we're not looking at MSBA projects under my administration. We're looking to fix what we have and keep our house in order and try to live within the, the means that we've given. And the projections for the current budget is we will come in with a positive on the, on the current budget. So we're able to do that as well. And it's been a very, very interesting and I'm going to miss this a whole lot when, when the time comes in the next few months. But I will tell you that it's been, it's been a great ride and you're very, very lucky.
Ready for questions?
I'm ready.
Let's see, let's start on this side this time. Counselors, Karen, do you have a?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you for all your work. I wanted to revive a question, I think, before you got here. Counselor Bidwell to my left.
I'll do my best to answer then, just before I got here.
I'll repeat it to you. Basically, the question was, you know, if you had a little more resources, what are some of the things you would like to do?
Well, obviously, some of them are on the capital side because we've got one classroom building which houses our, our advanced manufacturing program, our electrical program, carpentry, and our cabinet-making program that was built in 1948. We did lose a piece of that roof this spring and our insurance company paid us $50,000. We repaired that roof immediately.
What about non-capital?
Non-capital? I think we're spot on to where we need to be right now as far as programming goes. We are going to be involved at the state level with what's called the Workforce Skills Cabinet, which brings together labor, economic development, and education. We're going to sit with the folks of the Franklin Hampshire Regional Workforce Investment Board and we're going to look at what do we offer? What are the kinds of credentials that we provide to students upon graduation that are marketable in the workforce? And how can we make sure that we're providing the right education for the employers in our neighborhood? The employers will be at the table, the educators will be at the table, and the, the politicians will be at the table. And this is the going line throughout the Commonwealth. And we're going to be at that for, for this particular region. Most of the vocational, technical schools throughout the state will, will have representation on those meetings.
Thank you. And there's one line item in your budget. I remember I asked this of your predecessor. your predecessor. In 2014, it's your athletics budget. In fiscal year 2013, it was $26,000. And then, the following year, it increased $115,000. In fiscal '17, it's $186,000. And the proposed fiscal '18 is $230,000. So, I'm just wondering if you could speak to the increase in your athletics budget and explain the value of it for vocational school like yours in terms of, what's the educational value?
Well, I think athletics are a fantastic opportunity for all students, regardless of whether they choose a comprehensive in academic or vocational technical school. My predecessor did bring in a number of teams that had not existed prior. And I think some of the attraction for our students, in addition to the technical programming and the academic programming that they offer, is that students like to have that athletic outlet as well. And I will tell you that, I think it was yesterday, the baseball team qualified for the state tournament the first time in five or six years. The volleyball team, hopefully, is winning as we speak, and, you know. So, I think it raises all ships to have a very vibrant athletic program.
So, it's more of a community benefit than it has real no educational value? And the budget hasn't increased?
I think athletics and teamwork.
Okay.
It's like what we teach in the shops. In order to work in industry and work in the workplace, you have to learn those teamwork kinds of skills. And those are transferred to the athletic field, to the workplace, and to the home.
So, it does have educational value in terms of fundamental skills, according to you. So, it's comforting to know that, since it's increased by a factor of 10 over five years.
Well, I guess when...
Is it hit its ceiling, or is it going to grow?
I think it's leveled off, to tell you the truth, because we've added what we've added. And the numbers are very strong, both at the JV and the varsity level. And I'm not sure what my subsequent administration will do, but I would not be adding any sports at this time.
Perhaps it helps with recruitment of students as well.
It absolutely does. It absolutely does.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes, thank you, and thanks for all the work you've been doing and stepping in. Couple of things. Oh, I wanted to congratulate you. I know I did hear that the Capital Skills Grant Program was awarded, yes, for the electrical...
Electrical and Advanced Manufacturing, $401,000.
Right, right, which I know was something that's going to replace really outdated equipment. I know you said the building was old, but I did teach there myself in the electrical shop.
That's right, too. That's right.
Yeah. And it was, you know, they're still have the same -- they had the same materials there for decades.
The programmable logic controls that electrical needs. Gentleman that's the manager over at Coca-Cola, he and I have met, and this is exactly what he needs, is someone that understands that. So, now, we're going to have a direct pipeline right here from a great company that's right here in North Hampton. And those are the things we want to do.
And just to have that funded by the state is really, really great for the city. I don't think I have anything else. I just congratulate you on all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
I would just add to that, Superintendent Farm. Your interim tenure is -- it's significant by its absence of drama. And in fact, I think you've provided a stability that, I mean, you're put in a very difficult position as in interim status, particularly when you're transitioning between administrations and everything else, as we deal with these kind of budget challenges. Your stability has, I think, made a significant or absence of a dramatic impact while at the same time providing that stability that's actually critical. And I also thank you for your fluency of your budget and your description of such, and very much appreciate the time you spent.
It's not a job you can do by yourself. And I really appreciate Chairman Mike Haley, Vice Chair Tom Fitzgerald, John Cotton, Mayor Narcois, and John Provost, who sit as our Board of Trustees, because that's all part of this work. And that's a great staff. It's a great administration. And I'm going to be someplace next year. I'll be watching, and we're going to see great things.
Morgan, thank you. So, I have no questions.
You know, I just want to say that as somebody who's been involved in vocational work in the valley for years, Smith Voc does just a terrific job, you know, in terms of, I've worked with high schools in terms of developing internship programs and outreach for students. Smith Voc doesn't need it, because they've been doing it already for years. And when their students leave school, more than likely, they have a job waiting for them. It's really quite remarkable.
There's some new literature that's just been released by that Workforce Skills Cabinet. And you're going to see all schools are going to be doing internships. They're going to be doing shadowing and those kinds of things. And they're going to be doing interest-based makerspaces where they can tinker and get their hands on what excites them about being in school every day, whether it's playing baseball or whether it's building robots. So, I think we're at a very good place. And after being four years in Connecticut as a superintendent, boy, was I glad to be back in -- back home in Massachusetts.
Counselor LaBarge, do you have any questions for Superintendent?
Yeah, I do. I do have to say, I have a lot of respect for Smith Vocational. One of our family members was a graduate of Smith Vocational, and he has an unbelievable business for auto bodies on cars. And it's full-tilt auto body, huge business. They just bought a beautiful home, a commercial home. Their business is fantastic, and it's what he's learned from that school.
And that's one of the stories that needs to be told more often from the administration going forward about the great things of the graduates of Smith Voc.
I have a question about a couple of items.
Sure.
Couple of totals. I noticed the principal-viceprincipal line went up by about 18 and 3/4 percent. There was also another big jump in building technology. Could you just address why that occurred in this particular budget?
Building technology is, we're budgeting for our one-to-one iPad program that we started this past year. And we need to, you know, fund that every year. It was not in the budget this past year, so that's why it looks like an increase. And those other line items are based on contract negotiations. We're not sure what those numbers would be, and those would be placeholder figures for those positions.
Do we have any questions from Cyberspace? It's empty at the moment. And how about for members of the audience here? Does anyone have a question for Superintendent Farm on the Smith Voc budget?
Is it success in the robot field? It sounds fun. I don't know.
It is. There's a lot of success from... Absolutely.
Thank you, Superintendent Farm, for coming here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your years with us.
Also, I want to recognize Susan Wright also, who's a great partner. And as we transitioned in our business manager role, Nancy Roberts retired, and I have Crystal Fairman, our new business manager with us. She's doing a great job. And our principal, Dr. Andy Lincoln-Hoker, is here as well. And, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
We're rooting for you, and it's been productive for us as well.
Thank you. I'm rooting for you as well.
Thank you very much. Excellent. So, that completes that portion of our agenda. Is there any business in the finance committee side that we were unaware of? I know of none. Any finance members? I don't know of any. Then, in finance?
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.